So, all right, we'll start with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start our meeting tonight with a public hearing. Can I get a reading of the proof of publication, Mo?
Sure. Public notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing at Village Hall via Zoom at 7:30 PM local time on March 4th, 2021, for the purpose of hearing comments concerning the 2021 Community Development Funding Request and Amendments to the Five-Year Community Development Project Plan. The Five-Year Community Development Project Plan can be reviewed on the Village of Baldwin'sville website at www.baldwinsville.org.
We've had the reading of proof of publication. The formality of the saying, is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Saying none, I ask if there's anyone speaking against the proposal. Saying none, can we get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
Moved.
Megan and Mark, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we'll move on to our regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from February 18th, 2021? In a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you get those, Mo? Okay. Any changes, questions on the minutes? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Don't have any citizens' comments, trustees' comments? We'll start with Bruce.
Was I gonna piggyback on Bob's executive session? You and I had discussed possibility of having one.
Yes, why don't you? Why don't you, why don't you declare, declare one?
I'm gonna request an executive session for a personnel matter.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I appreciated you and Greg's comments on Facebook regarding pet owners today, but it was entertaining.
Well, I plan on bringing that up more, so, thank you. We'll move on, Andy?
Just the agenda items, no executive session, thank you.
We'll move on, Megan?
Just want to mention that the Volunteer Center is seeking nominations for the 2020 Man and Woman Volunteer of the Year Awards. You can get a nomination form through the Volunteer Center, or you can simply write a letter with someone you'd like to nominate and send it into the Volunteer Center. And I believe we're, we're accepting nominations until the 23rd of this month.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, Meg?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Ruth Seco?
Just the agenda, thank you.
Okay, Mike Shepherd?
Yeah, the agenda will work for me, thanks.
Okay. Mark Wilder?
I'm gonna stick to the agenda tonight, thank you.
Okay, okay, we got all the board members. Got a few things. The Chamber of Commerce is looking for a new director. Mary Ann is, is done as of tomorrow. If anybody's interested, it's 25 to 30 hours a week working for the Chamber. Contact Matt Hunt at Heritage Insurance here in the village. He's in charge of finding somebody new. If you have anybody you know, recommend them. It's become a pretty important position in our village. They're very involved in a lot of activities, so. There you go on that. Tomorrow at 11:00, I'm going to join a Zoom meeting with NICOM regarding the canal. There's, the governor is talking about different leadership to run the canal. And I think there's some concerns from NICOM and some of the communities along the canal. And so this will be a chance to hear some of the details. You know, we've had a pretty good relation with Canal Corp and some of the other canal people. And I hope this doesn't interfere with that. Women's Garden Club has, the hanging plants are on sale through, I don't have a date that they're gonna stop, but I think it's in mid-April. It's $50 a basket. It's a nice way to honor a loved one who's, who's passed, or your parents, if they're still around, or your wife, or whatever. And they're, the more the merrier. They hang them all over the village and makes our village look spectacular. So I would hope a lot of people would jump on board. I have contacted the county, we talked about this last meeting, about some events that people would like to see possibly be, you know, take place shortly. Have not heard back. One was the carp tournament, which Chief had told us he saw no reason. That couldn't go on, but people have been inquiring about softball. The seniors would like to get back in the senior center. Some may remember we went back late summer, early fall, to a very limited schedule. It was the events that were going on out in the parking lot and in the pavilion basically got moved inside because it could be safe distance and everybody had to go through the, the temperature check and that type of stuff. And they're anxious to try to get back in, and we want to do that if we can. Trying to see if we, if, what the prospects of having a farmer's market would be, if anybody's interested in running one. Also gonna throw in the visitor center over by the boats. That's a big asset to the boating community when they come in. And also the Seneca River Days, I know Rotary would like to be able to have them. They are very flexible. They're not pushing. They're talking about, and maybe if they had to do it at the end of the summer, that would be a possibility. So we'll see what we hear from the county as things start to get a little bit better. We're supposed to have a couple of days next week that are in, that are up in the low 50s. So people are starting to think about getting outside. I, I thought it was pretty interesting talking to Shelley Hoffman yesterday that, that we were talking about hanging flowers in the village. It gave me a real ray of hope that, you know, we're getting in the right direction. I see the Absolute Team won the big chill and donated about $1,240 to the Volunteer Center. So that was nice that they were able to raise that much money without having a live event for the public to take part in. So that was a, a nice one. I know the Volunteer Center was pleased to get that donation. What am I looking at here? Oh, we, we, a few weeks ago, we had WEP come in and make a proposal to us. They would like us to sign a contract or we turn over not ownership, but the use of and the care of our sewers to the county. I approached WEP and asked if we could wait until the 1st of March of next year. Our budget has already started this year. Would make it difficult to switch around people who are, who get all or partially paid for from sewer fund. And there is legislation being talked about to waive the restriction on sewer fund money and what it can be spent on, so that those, that happens, it will be easier for us to think about not having the sewers around. But if we're gonna have what we have saved up for sewer calamity, if that's going to be stuck in bondage for years and years and never be able to use it, that puts us in a tough spot. So we're hoping that our local legislators will get that taken care of, and we'll just keep you up to date with how that goes. And I guess that's all I have. We will, we'll have an executive session for personal consultation with our attorney. Is that how we want to word that, Bob?
Yes, this is for confidential attorney-client communications.
Okay, so that would be item E under executive session. And that's all I have. We'll move on to Bob. Do you have anything, Bob?
No, just other than the executive session, we'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Move on to Code Officer Greg. You're muted.
I think you wanted to mention something about the walking of dogs and the cleanup of their waste in the village. We've seen a lot of comments lately about the snow's melting. All of the fecal material is now appearing. And people need to understand that it is their responsibility to clean up after their pets as they're walking them through the village. It is a, it is against the village code, and they can be ticketed and fined for it.
Very good. And it may come to where we have to do that once or twice to let people know it's serious, but it, it just doesn't make sense for people to think that their dogs could leave messes on somebody else's yard, and then that, those people are responsible for cleaning it up.
Right.
That's just wrong. So I, I waited till your turn to talk because I knew it was, it was in the code. I just didn't know where exactly I would find it if I went looking, so I thought I'll let Greg talk about it. Anything else besides the dogs?
That's it for now. Hopefully spring's coming.
Hopefully. Well, about two weeks, right?
Yeah.
And then daylight savings time is March 14th, so that'll be good. Village Clerk, Mo?
Well, I just wanted to say again that right now Village Hall is closed to the public, but we are taking in village tax bills. There's a drop box outside our door that is clearly marked Village Tax Bills Payments and Water Payments. So you could just drop it in there and we will send you a receipt. Checks are preferred. If, if you must do cash, exact change would be, would be helpful.
Very good.
Stick to the agenda.
I did stop down tonight and sign a paper that you needed me to sign, and I saw the, the box with a note above it that said Taxes and Water Payment with an arrow like. So it makes it pretty clear. And you did say we got a couple payments by credit card?
Yes, we did, with the new system.
So people can, if you prefer to be on your computer and pay your taxes that way, that is available. They go onto our website to find the information?
It's right on your tax bill.
Okay.
On where to go to pay by credit card, or of course you could mail it, mail the payment in.
Okay, very good.
There is, you know, we have the intercom system, so if they have any questions, you can just ask, ask us right there, because we are in the building.
Thank you, Mo. Our treasurer is not here. A lot of you know Anna from her time working at Seneca Bank and now with us in the village, and her dad passed away on Monday. And we're very sad for her. And if you knew Anna, she'd probably love to hear from you. It's a tough time. We will move on to the Senior Center, Ruth?
Just a couple of things. I know we mentioned it before, but I, it bears mentioning again. The DPW is doing a wonderful job on the painting of the senior center space. They've completed the great room and continued on to the foyer and the entryway and moving down to the other side of the building. So it looks very nice, and folks are gonna really appreciate that when they have a chance to see it. So thank you to the DPW. So today we had our senior fair in a bag event, and we, we basically sold out, ran out. We had over 100 people come by very quickly, and so that went really well. There were a few people that were disappointed that they weren't able to get anything, and, but we visited with them and told them we're available, and if they had any questions, you know, on a particular thing, that we'd be happy to help them with that. So that was very successful, so that was fun. Also, a student from Syracuse University's New House Communications School filmed it, and he'll be posting it on their news site. So if anyone's interested, we can get you to how to see that, and maybe he would share that with us as well. On the 16th, there's a drive-up, drive-up event sponsored by the Senior Activity Committee at 2 o'clock. That's for St. Patrick's Day. And also the Rotary is providing a takeaway meal for seniors, and that is completely booked up as well. And that's it, unless anybody has a question. Right?
You, you, you're the hottest ticket in town over there. I mean.
Apparently.
I mean, the St. Patrick's Day thing was announced, I don't know, two weeks ago, and I think you told me like in two days, all of them were sold.
And they, and they allowed us to add more on top of the original number, and, and, you know, that, that filled up as well. So thanks to the Rotary, and let's hope for a nice day, and, and everybody will be happy that day and get their corned beef, and, and it'll be a little bit of a celebration for folks, so.
Well, so if people wonder, if people are anxious sitting home, obviously you guys are proving that you really are anxious to get out of the house.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Public Works, Chuck?
Well, we, we hope we're starting to wind down here in the snow plowing and having the last, last few weeks. We've been out a bunch of times, but for a little, little tiny inch, two-inch snow. The problem is, it costs just as much to plow two inches of snow as does six inches of snow, but that seems to be getting less and less, which, which would be good. Yeah, the storm that come through the other night, we really didn't have a lot of damage. I know a good-sized tree just missed, up on Sloller Street, just missed the pizza place up there. Up on Chaucer Circle, we did have a, a tree come down there and block the road, and we got in and got that taken care of. We are in the process of, of doing some security upgrades for the water in the, in the Highway Department. Hopefully that's gonna take care, that's gonna take place in the next couple, three weeks. We're just changing a bunch of locks, changing a bunch of combinations, and just upgrading some, some of our security. Donwell, the Donwell project of cleaning the, the two big wells up there is going very well. We're on our number two well this week, and it should be finished tomorrow. And we're gonna shift over to the other one, that, that project, that project's going very well. I was contacted today by County Sewers. They're looking for information for our mapping and, and how many different pump stations we have, and what information we could, we could get over to them. Other than that, we're pretty good, unless we have any questions.
Nope. I still, I see a Christmas tree up on Artillery Lane. Somebody must have thrown it out like the 1st of February or something.
Oh, I have seen one or two. Yeah, we can make a quick trip around and, and, and grab them. Yeah, we usually get, they come out in the summer too, but if we see them, we'll grab them.
Yeah, you'd be doing brush pickup real quick.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Okay, no questions for Chuck? We'll move on to Chief Lefencheck.
Good evening, Mayor. As, as I reported to the board earlier in our work session, our, our committee on Police Reform and Collaboration that was required under the Governor's Executive Order that he issued last year, we've had several meetings, and I have put onto the village website both the Anadog County Reform Plan as well as our local plan. Any comments by village residents can be directed to us. There's the email link on, on the website to do that. And as I mentioned, that will be on the agenda for, for this board to approve both the county and, and the village plan on March 18th. As you know, it's required to, to be submitted. Certification of that approval by, by the board is required by April 1st, or all state aid will cease on that date. And also, in the Governor's budget proposal, would allow the Governor to appoint an independent monitor at the village's expense until such a plan was, was completed. So those plans are done. I really want to thank all the participants that were on there. We had a group of 10 people. Trustee Shepherd was, was the co-chair with me, and we had, we had a good group of people, so some excellent commentary, good, good feedback for us, and I've incorporated those comments into, into our plan and some things that we're gonna be doing. And I think it's to improve the organization and the transparency between us and the community.
When, when can we expect to see the local version? I, I've got the, the one from the county. I've not seen the local one. I assume you were waiting till it was updated?
I sent it to the board last week, man.
No, I'll have to take a look. Maybe I didn't notice a second attachment or something.
Okay, yeah, no, if, if you need it, let me know. It's also on the village's web, website.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, unless there's questions.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to pending business. Can I get a motion approving the 2021 Community Development Funding Request and Amendment to the Five-Year Community Development Project Plan?
Moved.
Steve, have you, have you all seen the Five-Year Plan as presented by Mr. Stevens? The lead item for this year would be to add solar lighting and benches along the trail, running down behind St. Mary's Church, to add more time that would be effective for people to be on the trail. That early evening when it starts to get dusk, lights would come on and make it safer for people to be in that area. Got four other items there that we have for the future. You can submit more than one if you want. We, I, I have the paperwork for the refunding request for this year's cycle, which has to be in by April 9th. So we, we have a motion and a second for this tonight. We can approve it. We can get working on writing up the plan for what Bruce is envisioning. And we may have to see if we can get Steve Darkangelo to give us a hand with filling out the form, because there is some, some technical type stuff that he's done for years that if, if we undertake it, might be a lot simpler than we realize, and it'd be nice to have somebody like him take a quick look at it for us. So anybody have any questions about this year's item proposal or the, the Five-Year Plan? And if, and if we don't change the Five-Year Plan, you can, after we approve this item, I mean, for next year, we can, we can change it. We can move things around. We can bring things up, down, add things. But it's kind of a, to give us an idea, we are restricted on where we can go with the projects. I mean, there's parts of the village that can't be included, and the trail, community park, the senior center are some of the things that are available for us, and we've been able to do quite a bit with them. So this year's project is playground at community park. Then this would add to the trail leading to community park. So make that, that whole process of coming from Syracuse Street all the way down to community park would just be spectacular. So I think this will be a nice plan, and we'll see what happens. So we have a motion and a second with no further comment?
I got a quick, quick question. The 2024 construction of a community garden, where would that be located?
Somewhere in the community.
I'm guessing you're right.
Well, yeah, it's over at Canton Wood, it's a possibility. That was, that was one site that might be involved.
That's a good site, because there used to be a garden there that they took, a big time garden, vegetable garden. And I think the people that did it are either not there anymore or just ran out of gas. And so that would be a pretty good site. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried? Okay. Item B. This is discussion regarding the wet proposal. I've already kind of discussed that. And I, I forgot this was on, down on here and mentioned it in my comments. I expect that maybe by the next meeting, we, we might have some more information as far as whether the county's gonna let us delay our joint on. They may ask us to approve that we, we agree to it, but with a date down the road. So we'll see how that works out. Item C, discussion on water rates. This is Bruce's baby.
Is this my meeting or something?
Yeah, you're in charge of the Public Works Committee, and a lot of the items we discuss are Public Works.
Okay, I put out, what, a four-year proposal in discussions with the mayor at one point. He had suggested maybe because of the wet proposal out there and the fluidity of where we are, that maybe we only address a single year. And I tend to agree with him on this matter.
That was great color, Bruce. I like that.
I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at, what I'm, what I'm leaning toward is an increase of 2.5% on the water rates with, for inside-village customers, which amounts to 25.39 cents increase in their quarterly base fee, and a three cent per 100 cubic feet increase in their water usage. Basically covers the increased expenses we have to run the water department. I'd like to move the outside users up 3.5%. And as much as they don't pay any taxes, we have a water break. Our water department deals with it, but Chuck rolls the highway guys down also. And our village taxes supplement that. We have to deal with it. For outside users, there is no additional tax base to help offset those costs. So I think it's only right that we increase their rate in a more substantial level. It still only increases their the 100, the rate per 100 feet, let me see, goes from, right now it's a goes, it goes up a whopping nickel. So that's my thought. I don't know what anybody else is thinking.
Does, does everybody have a copy of what Bruce sent out, or lost it, or never saw it, or? Because he can send it back to you again. It was a, a full sheet of, of how this would be implemented. We also talked about the fact that Steve before had proposed a $30 per household surcharge for homes outside the village that get our water, that are not in a water district. Because if there was a problem, big time problem, it would be nice to have money put aside, that we would not have to spend village money in the beginning. You know, hopefully we would get paid back eventually, but in the beginning, we would have to outlay village money to pay for the improvement of that water area, and I'm not sure that it's fair for village residents to be taking care of outside-village users. I, I did not check. I don't know, Mo, do you know how many outside users we have who are not in water districts?
Do not know, stuck in my head.
So.
In all of Indian Springs.
Yeah, so it's, it's a bit of protection for us, and it's a bit of protection for the homeowners that we have a little bit of a nest egg type thing. If there's a water break that would run into several thousand dollars, there'd be a little bit of a reserve account to kind of take care of that.
Yeah, if you remember, when we took on the Lysander Water Districts, they collected money, or we've collected it. It's held in escrow for five years, and then it will be turned over to the water department. But they've put off, we've built the nest egg to handle those customers that are in districts. There's just nothing in place for the outer district.
Yeah, and we, we have run into issues different times when people don't pay that are outside the district, like they move and they have an unpaid bill. And, you know, with some people, we can turn it over to the towns to collect. It's a little more difficult when they're not in a district, and and I have talked to I, I think only the ones outside that, that use water like that are in the town of Lysander, if I'm not mistaken. Which I talked with. Which, uh, I've talked with Bob Wicks about the possibility, it would have to come from them. To organize the people who are not in the district. But, you know, there are many ways and to say, it's for your own protection. You know, put, create another district, add them to a district, it's, it's, uh. Indian Springs, maybe we add them to the West Genesee Street Water District and now there's more, more homes for more protection. Um, in the case of a serious expense type thing, so. Um, all stuff free to think about, but probably something we should. You know, have on the agenda that maybe next meeting or two and get it, get it taken care of, does anybody have any questions for Bruce?
We should act sooner than later.
Yes.
There's no increase in the, in the sewer use rate. No, we'd leave that right where it is, right, okay, just want to point that out.
Yeah. All right, well, if you don't have a copy of those rates that Bruce has proposed, make sure you let him know, um, and he can get it to you. Uh, you know, you should at least be able to look at it and know what we're talking about and uh. Bruce, when you feel comfortable, next meeting, the meeting after, get that on the agenda, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, I, I would really, if people get a chance to look, you know, I've laid out two and a half percent, three percent, three and a half percent scenarios. If there's anybody that feels we need to. Go higher or lower, I would like to hear that feedback.
Okay, and, and it's uh. I think Chuck mentioned it, but we, we were talking earlier today, he and I. And I'm very pleased that we're getting all the work done up at the Donwell and when that's done, they're gonna move over to Canton Street and work on. Uh, the wells over there. It's, it's a good feeling to know that our, we, we've taken some precautionary um. Proactive moves to get the equipment uh. At a point where we could look at it and maybe say, hey, this stuff ought to run for twelve, fourteen, fifteen years before we gotta worry about it too much. Which is kind of nice for taxpayers to know too, that we're, hopefully. It avoids too many big calamities that we might have to spend a lot of money and uh. And Chuck has been spearheading this, he's, you know, always pushing for uh improving. Our well sites and that type of stuff and uh. You know, he's, he's like a proud Papa when he sees those wells, those pumps get pulled out and then put back in there and ready to rock and roll. And uh, so I want to thank Chuck for uh, kind of leading us through that stuff, so.
Want to add, just so people understand why we are constantly doing the rates, Tim Baker worked with the DPW Committee. To come up with rate schedules that were constantly being adjusted. Because of two years, at least two years while he was here, we were tapping into. The reserves to pay for operating expenses, we weren't bringing enough money to pay for the water department. So we need to make these adjustments to keep our head above water, so to speak.
Are there any other questions for Bruce? Okay. Um, that ends our agenda items, we have two executive sessions, anything else that needs to be brought up?
Yes, new business, there's one item on new business.
I saw it before and I just, I, I'm sorry, thank you, Mo.
You're welcome.
Under new business, can I get a motion to declare the following items a surplus? Two weed trimmers, two blowers, a pole saw and a target saw per the DPW.
Move. Second.
Megan and Bruce, any questions? All in favor? Aye? opposed? Carried? There, this is the second time in like three meetings that I missed an item at the bottom. I gotta be more careful. Pardon me?
You've been keeping track.
Um, again, if, if there's anything we need to discuss uh in the meeting before we go to executive session. This is a time to do it if you gotta bring up anything. Um. Nothing, can I get a motion to move into executive session for two executive sessions, one personnel issue? And one for attorney-client privileged discussion? Mark with a question, Shep with a second, all in favor? Aye? opposed? Carried?